Anywhere from thirty minutes, forty minutes to get it to the computer. Call out sometimes. So, uh, when we talked to Jeff, as far as booking, the same thing. I stood there last Friday. We're trying to release three individuals and it took like thirty-five minutes before the booking release or sheet would be printed out. And Jeff was saying that it's cable that was running, you know, it probably didn't actually install it. The service didn't.
Current paper connection is buried at the edge of the courthouse construction site and they have nicked the cable. So it's still operating, but it has slowed down considerably. So that is why Jeff has suggested the wireless bridge.
So it's been nicked and nobody took initiative to get it repaired, like the contractor?
Well, contractors have never repaired it. Everybody told us there and he didn't need to.
Uh, for his last time, I heard he'd dig anywhere, he'd call 811.
Would be the responsibility of the contractor to see if they're going to be able to work on that again.
And I agree, I think it's a responsibility of the contractor. It's part of the, for taking that off the street.
Taking even like reports, the same thing, he'll start and then he'll get a, get a call to help.
He should go and give this picture to Jeff.
Right, he needs to be able to work.
I've made a vote to approve, I have a point on Chris.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Sheriff.
Do you want to use the cash on twenty-one?
Yes. We'll put it back, okay? Uh, number twenty-two is discussed, calculated, effective, and rollback tax rates.
Our effective rate as calculated is fourteen point nine cents per hundred. Of that, uh, ten point seventeen cents would be for M and O, uh, point one, one point eight four cents would be INS, and two point eight nine cents would be Rutherford Bridge Special, with a total of point, uh, one four nine oh. Uh, the rollback rate is calculated as point, is eighteen point seven cents per hundred. Thirteen point seven three cents would be M and O, one point eight four cents would be INS, and three point one three cents would be Rutherford Bridge Special. And just FYI, I wanted to realize what happened to our values. I know the rate really dropped.
Just a second. On your effective, the Rutherford Bridge Special is point zero two eight nine, and the INS is point zero one eight four, not one point eight.
I apologize, I read that wrong.
So it's on record correctly. Same thing on the rollback.
Thank you, I really am, I apologize. Okay. Uh, just FYI, our certified values as received from the appraisal district last year were three point one seven, three billion, one hundred thirty-seven million, three hundred twenty-nine thousand, sorry, three billion, one hundred thirty-seven million, three hundred twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred fifty-six dollars. Our certified value is received this year, six billion, six hundred fifty-five million, seven hundred sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. So we doubled the gain. Okay, so that's the rate as calculated. Y'all have any questions?
I'll give you a senior notation on the bottom of the first page, uh, the increase or decrease.
If Orange County adopts a two thousand thirteen tax rate equal to the effective rate of one four nine over one hundred, the value taxes would increase compared to two thousand and twelve taxes by twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. What was our effective tax rate for this year? What was it?
Point two three nine seven.
Yeah, I can remember with Rutherford Bridge and everything was, I was point two nine four three.
I think it's point two three nine seven.
I don't have it here in front of me, I can certainly get that information for you. Hi? When you're tax collecting, I'll double the values, that's where you get your future money.
And then, I guess, discuss or disapprove of the possibility of adopting the calculated rollback rate, which will require publication of two public hearings on the tax increase.
Right, right. The effective rate is the highest rate that we can adopt without, uh, notice of public hearing on tax increase. We could require that notice in the paper and two public hearings. If you choose to go between that effective rate and the rollback rate, we wouldn't even publish, publication in the paper seven days before. So we're looking at, if that's a possibility, we wouldn't even know by the sixteenth to get it in next week's paper. And then seven days after that, the first meeting could be held on date twenty-nine and the second hearing could be held on date four. If you would choose to go higher than the effective rate and not to exceed the rollback rate.
And all our activity going down, our, our sales tax, what was our sales tax collection this year?
Nine million.
Nine million plus. Nine million, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Our sales tax collection is going to be now, is going down quite a bit because the infrastructure is getting put in, the pipelines get put in, just leaving the census and it's going to decrease, so we won't have that income. So, we all think we need to collect more taxes to keep our income up. I know it's going to be a tough job. Once this tax rate starts falling down, we can't increase it. We're down to fourteen percent, we decrease that only, uh, fourteen cents, we increase that only eight percent a year. So we can increase it.
Eight percent over the capital of the effective rate for next year.
So, we're not going to be able to, we can go down fourteen cents this year, but when it comes to that point, our rate, our amount of increase might be five cents. We can drop fourteen cents easy, but we can't go back up.
But you have to realize too, if your, if your tax base goes down, your effective rate's going to go up. Okay? So, the purpose of it is to collect about the same thing, if we're collecting money this year.
And an eight percent increase on the fourteen nine effective rate now would be a penny.
A penny? What was your rollback rate, considering your debt rate and everything?
So what I'm, what I'm saying is, I've talked to people from around the state, especially West Texas, where they've had this happen, and they couldn't increase their taxes, so we want to get this low.
You know?
Not without caution to court, is be mindful of seventeen forty-seven, that's going to require a significant outlay for a huge return. Remember that, keep that picture in mind.
And we could, you know, we could go up to that, up to that rollback rate, that in effect, one one eight seven zero. I just need, uh, y'all to tell me that, so we can get in the paper.
I'm glad you do that for me.
Okay.
I mean, that's my opinion, it's not a motion, that's my opinion, it's based on, I don't know if it's.
I just need to, I need to get in the paper, I thought this Friday, so I'm going to edit. Look around, the thing I'm hoping to get in here, sales tax revenue is going to come out, and, uh, we all really want to be around, we can work on all the different things.
Okay, so what I mean, okay, well, y'all just need to make a motion or, and whatever, to tell me to go ahead and put that in the paper. And if I put it in the paper next week, we can have the first meeting on twenty-eight, we can have the second meeting on the fourth for these public hearings.
Will you be able to?
Sure, I just want to know, I just need to know, if we want to use those dates, I need to know the date, the time, and the location for the meeting. Okay?
Any other questions? I think, well, what we're talking about is we want to approve the possibility of adopting the calculated rollback rate, which will require, I make a motion that we approve the possibility of adopting the calculated rollback rate, which will require publication of two public hearings on the tax increase.
Sorry.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Just send me some, uh, dates for that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Number twenty-four is acknowledgment of Shelby, uh, typically changed an uncompensated volunteer with EMS, that's, uh, Danny Benson.
Good morning, we would just like to bring this form of agreement by the court in acknowledging commissioner's conference change with all of the issues, being an uncompensated volunteer.
And I, you know what, just, with that acknowledgement, I want to move to number thirty, so we'll have on the same page, discussion email with Jim Allison. I emailed Jim, Jim, because we could not get a straight answer. I emailed Jim, because we could not get a straight answer, was it abstaining, not abstaining, due, not due. There is AG's opinion, it's Greg Abbott, oh, Greg Abbott, oh, six four five, that's out there, and what it is, it says, pull it up yourself, is, uh, you can't, you can't be a commissioner, you can't be a member of commissioners' court and, uh, receive another county paycheck. That's simply what it says. And there was kind of a question, I think, and I asked another question about, I know we had some other employees that were also compensated with EMS, the deal is, is we make decisions for commissioners' court, we can't be compensated, and there's also, there's a strange little ruling on that, I don't know if I put it in here. Saw came up about some guy having air conditioners in, in one of the service company, and, yeah, you can still go out for contract, you can still go out for bid, you can still do stuff, you still have the right to own a business, you still have the right to do all that stuff if you're the commissioner's court, you just don't let on that. But with this one, it's a double paid county employee deal. So, go back to number twenty-five, is the authorization to advertise for full-time EMS administrator, basic job, EMS administrator, basic job description is attached. I'd also like to advertise for EMTs and paramedics.
Uh, we're at the one time, uh, I think it's real understood, EMS, to some top of the main personnel, uh, first, definitely getting that done is getting them straight on board. Uh, like I said, I'm just good for the meantime, and I'd like to wait, start advertising in a position, see if there's some metrics coming.
So, you just want to send it to the newspaper, Danny, is that what you want to do?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion to advertise for full-time EMS administrator, basic job description is attached, I don't like, what about EMTs and paramedics, did you ask about that in there too?
Uh, I would, well.
I make a motion, I want my motion to include that we advertise for a full-time EMS administrator, EMTs and paramedics. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Number twenty-six, response to the presentation made by members of the Orange County EMS Association. I have attached a document that I'd like distributed to commissioners, that's Danny. Danny, I'm sorry, but I have the proof here, I wasn't here when a lot of these came in.
Do we have them in our package?
They should be. EMS job description right here, let's see if this is it. Here it is, it's here. Go to EMS job description, that's Danny's package.
Anyway, folks, I have a very long hard copy of this, and I think we lose my voice, it's kind of a message that. I have a lot of response to what was presented, and if y'all have any questions, you're free to answer in general. Uh, other than that, I don't think y'all feel we're here to clarify some of that, unless you're not. Uh, I believe in Gordon, that's who y'all feel. But y'all, y'all feel it's been out really for a minute, so we just, you know, we thought about this more than. Uh, I know y'all heard from the press this morning, the document is not an official responsible association, so, uh, I think it's, it was beaten last time. I cannot speak for them, my bullets speak for them, I was wanting to address the consensual product, and I'll leave it up to all, who would have actually addressed or included it.
So the group that made these allegations will not be with you?
It's, whoever's emailed phone calls, requests in the place of that, I'll complete them.
No?
Okay. By the way, mission, we're looking to work with the ministry, we want to do a program for, I will talk.
I don't have a problem with you, Danny, I've been talking with you, and I've been keeping, guys, I've been keeping up with you, Danny, I've been talking with him on phone calls, and, and he's been explaining what's going on, everybody's on.
What Dan has to have, he's trying to get everything forward, I give him, you've never been taught this, staff.
Uh, our staff can fix it, not can fix itself over there. Uh, we have very little, we're doing anybody else, kind of, we got that. Uh, I've tried to put some things in place, to try to, there was a few planned, uh, big thing I get feedback from, the gas, two fifty, yeah. You know, uh, we can eventually host training classes here, but we're talking roughly nine months from the start of the class, we get these people up on. So, again, we're moving some direction, you know, fix a problem. Uh, y'all need to understand that when I have this, the help, the tax regi, that's skills I have, I have, I see. And I have some of the shared resources, you know, that I did before, so we're working through this problem, it's just going to take time.
You're not in favor of going to a paid service?
I.
You're in favor of shipping in house?
You know, uh, in a perfect world, I would say, let's hire about five full-time crews in the district on the full day, where everything's covered by papers. Financially, I don't think that's possible right now. Uh, I would, my suggestion would be a twenty-four hour crew back with the volunteers, and you have, you have to look at it kind of two categories, what do we have to have, what do we, I have to have two people on the twenty-four hours of that, as we, I need to be able to put two trucks on the road at any given time. So, right now, we're kind of focused on this one, but the other one plays in. So, again, you know, we'll talk much tomorrow, this, that, my opinion was, uh, that presentation is completely, the time for the meeting that I couldn't have presented, and, uh, I just want to make sure that they're, what they brought to y'all, I have addressed, there's no questions.
All right. Judge, I've been keeping, you know, contacting with Danny, and we've been talking, you know, I don't have a problem.
I think there's, you know.
I mean, I would love to see, stay all volunteer, this is the most cost-effective way of.
Yeah, but everybody's working nowadays, that's the hard part, everybody has day jobs. Everybody that's volunteer has a day job.
This is something we're seeing, just because, uh, stop building, this is a, says try, uh, floor building has heavy payments, daytime staff, couple of years ago. Goliath, when they shut the hospital down back in the mid-nineties, had a good experience, uh, because their volunteers would not be able to sustain the increased transport time for students. So I mean, it's, it's been something that's been coming for years and years and years, just through volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Number twenty-seven, discuss act on proposed subdivision ordinance for Orange County, that's commissioner's brief.
We, uh, back in, uh, I think it was April, we, we were offered, everybody was giving publicly proposed, uh, subdivision ordinance, uh, county attorney had reviewed it.
Where?
County attorney had reviewed it, and, and, uh, he'd made some changes to, tweaked it to where he thought it, uh, like Orange County, every commissioner is given one, uh, you know, it's, at ample time, I feel to review it. Uh, any questions of it? Otherwise, I'd like to see us go ahead and, um, go ahead and approve the subdivision rules regulations, development regulations, so that you can have some type of control of what's going in right now, and just aware and how it's being done. I know that's a, there's been several phone calls, people wanting to know about our subdivision ordinance, is, do we add any, how stringent are they, these are kind of pattern after Wilson County. Uh, they've, something that's been put into effect there, it's working well for them. It requires a committee, which will be, it will be like county clerk, uh, branch management coordinator, and then several people inside, we do certain public, public pay managers to review the flats that are submitted and stuff like that. But I think we need to really get these in a place, and then, as we go, I know we'll probably have to, to make amendments to it and changes as we go, we need to have something in place now, because, next thing you know, we're heading, we may get a big area of growth and, and we need housing, but we don't want, we want to make sure they're, they're planned and, and, so we can, uh, pretty much control what, not, well, say control, but be able to, to say how, how it's going in, not apply by night factor, but, uh, there. City Candy has, has, you know, uh, restrictions and stuff that they, for their type of growth, so out of the can, there never, there had been a beat year, even when he looked at this to walk. But I think we need to actually, uh, go ahead and, uh, initiate this into a thing. I know the cover page says as of May thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, that would have to be changed, there is a sheet signed, your judge, if we do approve, adopting the rules, there's a sheet that just said you have to fill out.
Okay, and there's a individual acknowledgement on the back, where it says, I'm going to make this myself, that's, that's, or that's just, what is the, on the, what you go, on the back is, can we just, this individual acknowledgement, is that for a person, when they, dedication and conveyance?
This has, these are the forms that are used, that are used by the applicant for the, uh, for the subdivision permits in the subdivision.
Okay. And each one of those would be done individually?
Individually, but they're not, we don't have to, they're just.
Right, individually.
As they provide their plan, they have to do all this checklist stuff to, uh, apply the other restrictions, like, uh, our. There is a, there is a page there that says, except for, you go down.
Yes, sir. This one?
It, it, it.
Right, this one we have to do today too? Okay, I have it on the back, that's what I was asking you about, that's not individual.
And this was, and the forms that are attached, as, uh, there's, that form for nine one one, it's kind of a turnkey type of plan, we want to put water, it's specified, we got the water, uh, go to the, the regulation that we need to do that. Also, I know it's a little behind the curve, but I'd like to eventually, uh, bring one forward for trade apartments.
Is that going to fall under mine law, or force that?
Your quarter, I guess, we'll have to have a code.
They come to me before they come to anybody else, so I need to know.
You'll have copies of, of the subdivision ordinance, you can provide it to them, they'll have all the forms that they have to comply, and they come back to the committee that, that has all that, and you will verify their forms in committee of double check. And we'll have to have a code compliance officer reach out and work on that, I told you. Mr. Nussbaum, is this possible, that I'm not making a draw on that?
Uh-huh.
Code compliance officer is sacred to the process for the progress of this. You really don't need to pass it if you're not going to be satisfied with, for you to address the issue.
So we need the budget for a code compliance officer?
It is called simple, it's, it's, that's kind of, it's kind of, we will.
No, we'll have to have a code compliance officer, we talked about that. If we're going to get a code compliance officer, are we going to get one that's qualified or not qualified, that's the problem that we're having in other entities, uh, if we're going to get one, we're going to have to get one that's qualified to check everything. That means it's going to have to be a new contract that has plumbing license, electrical license, or we're going to hire someone that just has general knowledge of it, and get ourselves in trouble. Once you hire a code enforcement like that, he, in my, in my opinion, we set up here and we hire, and we have to do that, I don't believe there's any. This is just, I know, the, the basic round to take off, and, and I know, I don't.
I think it is a basis.
What job spec should I need to be addressed by the county court? As to this, to the code compliance officer.
And if it's going to be a compliance officer, it's just a general startup, you know, it's , because you're going to have to be, what kind of education are you going to have to have, you're going to have to have some kind of master on there, or bachelor, or something? Is it just going to be someone that's worked in the field twenty years, we think he can do it?
Job spec, I think the commission court can set down a, set a job spec as to what they want, a compliance officer, what requirements they need.
I think Shelby's just looking for a basis to start.
No, and I, I agree with Shelby, I think he's right on that, I'm just worried about a compliance officer, code compliance officer, if he makes a mistake, makes a mistake out there.
We can pass this, let me consider, is he acquiring one, Shelby created all the next agenda, he wants you to hire a compliance person?
You know, like this checklist, it just, and a compliance officer can probably end up, I mean, can and should, just review the, uh, the letters that we need, the, the attachments, make sure everything's in place, uh, we don't want somebody here doing something, driving around verifying, it's not going to be a full-time job for a code enforcement officer, because we use it for, for everything. Uh, I've talked with Elaine about the, Ms. O'Keller, I've talked with you about, Sarah has, Sarah has even suggested that, that we do, we get something like this, so we'll have a, have a standard of, way of monitoring what comes in. Wilson County has a, what they call a safety and health person that does theirs, uh, but.
Like right at, sorry, for a tough one too, subdivision application checklist, the following items must be included as part of the application for subdivision development. Here it has letter from public water utility company, letter from electrical utility company, telephone providers, so our code enforcement, he's going to have to look over that, that's why I mentioned.
To review.
Right, that's why I said plumbing, electrical license, no matter what, when you're in, when you're in rules and regulations of anything, it's going to have utilities in it.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why I'm saying, who, who would we hire, it's going to be.
I don't think you have to decide that.
I don't think you have to decide that today.
Can I just? I'll do that after because it's gonna, it's gonna hit us right here.
Can I speak in a non-professional capacity, because I do not work for Sarah anymore? But in my opinion, I live in Wilson County, it's about sustainable development versus just people being able to go out and build whatever they want. So that's, that's really what you guys have decided today. Do you want sustainable development that's gonna take you to responsible, you know, development and looking at, starting to put some guidelines out there so that people are not allowed to just build whatever they want? But that's your decision, you know, as a county.
I understand 100% completely what Shelby was telling me, thank you for the explanation, but I understand what he was trying to tell me. What I was, that we jumped into something else about code compliance. That's why, that came into play, that's why I'm asking.
Do we want to do anything with this, your mom? What about code compliance, we don't press on.
Helen, you got a comment?
Yes, so we only have the problem that we're running into is that people build whatever they want to out there first, then they go permit. We don't have anybody riding around checking to see what they're building, where they're putting it. The only time that they come to us for a permit is when they need the access, and then we find out, okay, you already built a company out there.
But a lot of times, that's because they'll call and they say, do you have any rules and regulations in place? We say no. And so then they go out there and start building houses.
I think we need this, we do need this.
I think we need it, I think it's a good basis for a good start.
I, we've been talking about this for a long time. I know it's not a perfect thing, and it's a lot of the questions are good, but we need to get some type of rule set up so we can easily manage what's going on in the county against the growth.
Good start. But, Cheryl, Cheryl.
Sure. I just, you know, I want to thank you for bringing that up, to look at these ordinance systems, I think it's very important that we start to look at these things and while you're looking at that, I would also ask that you consider looking at one of these injection wells again, when I'm in Wilson County, I mean, it's a Brea County, and I went to attend a city town hall meeting with the county commissioners and the city council looking at what they're gonna be about. So I would appreciate if you're with me at this ordinance.
Let's stay with this one today, Cheryl.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
But thank you very much. If somebody could get a template for us on some of these others, it helps, because if I put something on this, I've asked for a lot of these templates, a lot of places say they have them, but they don't actually have them. And that's what's killing us too, is being able to find a lot of this stuff without reinventing the rule. So what are we gonna do with this? Yes.
Make motion to the council, oppose subdivision ordinance for county counties.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries the box of rules, I'm gonna sign this. The next item on the agenda is number 28, Discuss Act of comments placing items forefront of agenda after pledging allegiance to Shelby.
I have a speaker that signed up to speak on that agenda item, and I don't want to tell.
Ms. Simpson, you're gonna address number 28, 29, yeah?
Thirty-one.
Twenty-eight, one?
Thirty-one.
Twenty-eight, thirty-one?
Thirty-one.
Good morning. For our address listed items, eight, thirty-one, I would like to applaud Commissioner DuBee for placing this matter of citizen's speaker on the agenda. I'm speaking in support of moving citizens' combat comments back to the beginning of the commission's court instead of at the beginning. All the commissioners should follow his sentence. Do the right thing and vote his support. Commissioner DuBee, the second, the second to the leadership of this commission. First amendment against states, constitution states, that Congress has no law respecting establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging of freedom of speech or press or the right of people to peacefully assemble and petition governmental ledness of grievances. Freedom of speech is a foundation of our party. The presiding officer has arbitrarily, at the votes of the commissioners, moved citizens' comments from the beginning to the end of the meeting. It appears to be an attempt to prohibit citizens from participating in discussions on the subject of the commission's court. We did a small survey of six neighboring counties and provided a chart for each of them. This is what we found. We surveyed six of our neighboring counties, as spoken, Milton, Bee, Liro, Red, and Goliath counties. When we asked these questions, where is the placement of citizens' speaker on the agenda? How long are they able to speak? Were citizens allowed to participate in the discussion of agenda items during the meeting? The response was, and what the responses were, five out of six counties, citizens to be heard are at the beginning of their commission court meeting. All six counties allow a minimum of five minutes for a heat car speaker. The only county where citizens be heard is placed at the end is the Witten County. However, as Paul Harvey did, what I said, here is the rest of that story. There is, all persons present are allowed to participate in the discussion of any item on the agenda during the meeting. Again, I would like to thank the commissioner for placing the citizens to be heard as an item on the agenda. And I urge all of the members of this court to move, to support moving citizens' speakers from the last item on the agenda back to its original position on the agenda after four to six. Item thirty-one.
Ms. Simpson has three minutes. Paul has three minutes.
I will vote to give her no time, but doesn't give a round. Mr. Moore.
Item thirty-one, courthouse decorum references the mountain plan of citizens' citizens' and spirit. And I urge you to change that to three minutes. Our constitution guarantees us the citizens the right to speak and speech and out of the, and if government starts building these rights in any form or fashion, we should be able to tell you, guys, that you have moved us to the end of the agenda in the hopes that we will be heard. And leaving the court, so as not to hear what we have to say, limiting us to three minutes and whether we will be providing an extension time to finish this at the wheel for those present.
Okay, and number twenty-eight, I had, I've had several people contact me about this, Ms. Hall last week made a very eloquent, to me, a very strong, profound statement about this, about the, where the comments on the agenda were. It's always been at the forefront. I know that when people come up before the court, I appreciate what the judge did, done was allowing people to speak about a certain agenda item. However, some people want to come just to speak and leave, they haven't waited for the whole meeting, and that's not, to me, respectful of any citizen or taxpayer. But that being said too, is that, just to go back to the decorum thing, I don't, you know, I don't care if some people tell me how stupid I am or whatever the case, that don't bother me at all. I don't mind getting my butt chewed out for something that we did wrong, maybe I vote what somebody else may think, but I do not like anybody being attacked by, by public comments. And maybe gonna attack anybody, you should do it outside or in the paper, everything. But that does my whole thing. I've had, again, numerous phone calls, I've talked to numerous people in every precinct, every time I've gone anywhere, and they've asked why can't we get this put to the front? So in order to put this all to bed, that's why I put it to the front. So I'm asking y'all to approve this. The agenda is part of the commissioners' support duties, and this is where.
And I don't agree with that, but I want to tell you one thing, this is the deal too, we have a lot of citizens that come in here, they're here to do mental leases, and they're here to take care of county business. They want to come in here and do their business, and they want to leave. They don't want to sit here and listen to the politics of Orange County government. And what we need to do is, Orange County, I mean, what the courtroom decorum says, the heart of the county's court is county business. So much stuff that comes in here has nothing to do with county business, that's why we adopted the decorum, that's why everybody else adopted it. It has nothing to do with, we're supposed to be here, anything that we come here and talk about is county business. Creative speeches anywhere you tend to be, you know, pick it outside our real rooms, you can do anything, pick it anywhere, you can do anything like that. That's what, you know, we do have rights. But in here, we're supposed to be taking care of county business, and it doesn't happen. We sit here longer and longer. I know the commissioners get so upset right before meeting. Every single one of y'all told me, why do we sit there so long? Y'all get frustrated, you're angry, and then a lot of times when we're talking and it's just one-on-one, you're like, Barbara, move that meeting, move it, move it. And I'm like, okay, how? We just need to be taking care of county business.
If they get more to talk and they get up there and they talk about something, it's fine. Point someone out different, but I think it helps me up in the front of the meeting, get it over with, and then we go on.
I'll make the motion to move the public.
But it should be county business, wait a second, can we talk about that?
All back in.
Any citizen.
My motion's still gonna stand, but we talked about it. I mean, I go, no, you go ahead. Or I had a meeting at 7:30 this morning, I had to get here for a nine o'clock meeting, I had to leave that and come over here to the courthouse. I have to go back, I'm gonna be back there at 11 o'clock. I don't know what time it is now, it's past 11, I'm sure. Anyway, we have a lot of things to do. Ms. Simpson elected to discuss hers later in the meeting, not at the front part of the meeting, but she couldn't. So what do y'all want? We can't accommodate everybody and make everybody happy with what we do. That's just a fact, everyone can't be happy with what we do.
But, no, and that's understandable, but the basic is this, the comments that we place at the back need to be put to the front, in my opinion, to give everybody, to get their, take care of their business. And somebody may say something, sometimes somebody says something in the first part of the meeting that triggers my dumb mind into something that's gonna be 25 items down the line. And sometime, and everybody's got, everybody knows word, when they say something, I listen, I take the whole process of this stuff, but when they say something, I, you know, they can say it the first part, and again, the item on the agenda may not meet till number thirty-three or twenty-two, who knows? But something they may have said may have triggered my mind, or maybe somebody else's mind in here to think about something for, for, on the agenda, or for the future.
Then do we just violate all the Oka meetings acts and just say, okay, everybody just talk together? How do y'all want this done? I mean, there's gotta be some, there's gotta be some form of. Okay, so it's gonna be at the beginning, and that's what it's gonna be, it's not gonna be moved around, not continually, not.
And when we move it around?
Well, like he said, Mrs. Simpson chose not to.
Well, because, because we were following what the agenda said. The agenda says, the current, since we heard regarding specific agenda, general comments, you only include specific agenda, we'll be heard after the county's conclusion. But they, you know, again, if we move everything to the front, it's all done.
Okay, so we're gonna move everything to the front, it's all, it's not gonna be, we're not gonna weigh in the whole different meeting items, everything's gonna be at the front, that's when it's gonna be done.
That's my, that's my intention to the first meeting.
Everything will be done at the front. Public comments part. Public comments, everything at the front, that's it.
And then again, you look at the courthouse, the decorum by the commissioners' court, by fifty-four, page three ninety-two, look at sub number eight, and it's pretty much tells you how you can counsel speakers, time remaining time, removal of courtroom and temp citation. And it says quite frankly, neither is the intent of the court to allow member or members of the public to insult the honesty or integrity of the court as a body of any members of the court individually collectively, according to the venue itself, threatening language, directed at the court, any person present, and our racial, ethnic, and gender slurs are, will not be tolerated violationary ruling, resulting in following sanctions, and that is cancellation of speaker duty.
Well, and it says that, this is supposed to be respectful of moral or not, it's not to demean any individual or any.
And I think we get this back.
If we're gonna do something to somebody, there's a whole criminal courtroom, lot across that hall, and a civil courtroom. This is commissioners' court, this is county's business.
And, and then again, this thing was moved to the back, it's created controversy. I'm tired of everything, you know, there's so much we have, controversy going on within the county, and we've got bigger fish to fry than worrying about putting somebody to the back. So I think, I make a motion that we have.
But it's gonna stay there, right, at the front?
At the front.
At the front.
What about the time limit? Wait, that's, that's number thirty-one.
And there was a motion made, right?
Motion made.
I already made one, I started making the motion, but I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please, I'm sorry.
But I want to speak here to the public that I respect y'all, and I know that y'all told me many, many times, for 14 years, y'all pay our wages, and I respect y'all very, very much. I'm going to love, love y'all very, very much too. But I know there's gonna be an issue with this, no matter what, I've been here 14 years, long enough to know that I want to put it on the front, don't get me, don't get me, I want to put it on the front. But I know if we don't give them, and it's not gonna take, think about it, give them three minutes or extension to five minutes, it's not gonna take any much longer, any longer than to let them speak on the item. It's not gonna make it go any quicker. If five want to speak and then two want to speak on a certain item, they want to speak on twenty-six, twenty-seven, we're not reducing the time they're speaking, it takes the exact same amount of time to have them, because I'm gonna hear, I'm gonna, they're gonna, I'm sorry, but there's gonna be a complaint about, I don't want to speak at the start, I want to speak on agenda item. And it's not gonna take any more time on the commissioners' court if we put the people that want to speak on a certain item, on a certain item. What time is it gonna take? We're still limited them to time, we're just keeping the public happy. If the public happier, keeps everything happier, it makes the meetings go a lot quicker, maybe we can, maybe we can smooth some of this out. But I know for the public, I know what I'm saying. I mean, this is, it's not gonna end here, it's gonna be, I wanted to talk on the agenda item, so I think we should just do that right now.
Do you want it on the agenda item?
If, that's what they, they want to do. I want to put all of them, I want to put all of them to the front, but limited to them, just to the front, no. I want, like Mrs. Simpson, I want us to talk on agenda item number seventeen, and she wants to get her information out at that time, then that's what I want to do for people, because that's what people are gonna want. It's not gonna end just because we put them at the front, it's not, I know that. Well, that's what I think, make it happy, nobody's ever happy, not even me, we're never happy, but if it helps out, if it helps out the court.
Just as long as we're able to participate.
Yes, ma'am, that's what I want, give y'all 100% participation like that, and I know, and I apologize for the timeframe, but give y'all maybe that would time, maybe we can make it five, I don't know, but there is a court to where that time was done years ago, voted in years ago and everything, because there's some people that could talk for thirty, forty minutes, and I was there when there wasn't a time given, and people just kept repeating the same thing over and over and over, back in, you know, 2001.
There are a couple of counties that do not have a policy back, but they don't have a problem with it either.
There's many counties that under the, I mean, they're tit for tat, but let's see how Orange County.
Well, it's just nice to know what our surrounding departments are doing.
One motion stands on that, on putting this item at the forefront of the agenda after pledging allegiance, but with the option that if the citizen wants to be heard on the, on the agenda item, certain agenda item, they can be heard on that number two. Is that right?
Is that what we're doing?
I'll say.
Okay, I'll read a second. You seconded it a minute ago, you want him to second it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then number twenty-nine, is Discuss Act establishing procedure for consulting without flag counsel, naming victim of or road权or now. Any department head will consult with Orange County attorney prior to requesting commissioners' support for approval prior to contacting the counsel. In an emergency, county attorney will be consulted prior to contacting victim of or road权or and now, so it does also have a mountain to set, not to exceed per month, as determined by the commissioners' court, and that Shelby.
I'll put that on her again, I got tired of getting my butt raved out, so she's a law firm.
David, do you ask for people here? Do you ask for her to come in here?
I understand, and it's been my, my understanding, that different departments sometimes will pick up the phone, call victim of or, and talk to an attorney or something, ask them for a comment or a ruling or something. And then, again, nothing, when we call, when somebody calls an attorney, it's gotta be that pressing that you can't just, I think you just can't wait. All I'm asking is that, and I did specify it in the of or, for the simple reasons that that's something we've been using a lot. that that's something we've been using a lot. And all I'm asking is that the court, that we, before we contact any outside counsel, we contact our local counsel first, or we use TAC, or whoever, but the court needs to be aware that we're contacting him and let the court decide what we need to, how we want to handle it. Maybe I didn't word it right, I don't know, but my whole purpose is one is that I'm just trying to stop everybody from calling, calling another attorney for services that, just, you know, when you, just to get some little information, and when you do, it's costing us money. And, and I don't know how much it, it costs us, do we set up, or do we set an amount for outside legal firm that, every budget year, however, a special counsel, whatever? And I don't, you know, my thing is this, is that I'm just trying to stop some of this calling every five minutes for something that we don't really need to do. And if it's a major, major thing, something to do with really a legal, I understand, like going back to Herb, he does, he has a government lawyer that we all, he brought forward us that we approved to, to take care of contract stuff. I know Herb is more of a prosecutor than he is, I guess, a general counsel, but I just do this out there for conversation and, and try to stop some of this, this, this bleeding.
Well, and I, I do want to point out though, since Herb has been here, Herb verified this, I have not talked to Vittin Navarro without him. And we have gone out and we've tried to do a lot of things, we're having a lot with court, Herb, you're right, Herb is a prosecutor, very good prosecutor, goes through a lot of court. And we go through like competitive bidding process and all these forms that we have to write out. They have to have all these little legalities and all this stuff in here, so we'll say, okay, let's do a competitive bid pack. When y'all leave, or we do a resolution. I don't know how to write some of that in legal terms. Herb doesn't know how to write some of that. We're not, and rather than do shoot off the tip law, Herb will come in there and we'll call, we'll ask, and we'll sit there and try to figure it out ourselves. Now, like on the mineral leases and stuff like that, they made us a template, and I tried to use that template, you know, and I tried to do it myself and have Herb review it, but still, sometimes there's questions.
What about, what about TAC?
Well, when we call TAC, you know, TAC's always answer is it's not our job to give you legal advice. They cannot, they won't write us a bid packet, they won't, they don't give us legal advice. So when you leave me with something to do, commissioner's court, and Herb can't do it, if we don't want it done, that's fine.
Well, that should be part of the motion when the action's taken by court to do it.
Just like the two hundred dollars.
But that's, that's not, it's not that simple. Like the competitive bid packets, we have to have bids. There's two places, stuff has just been dumped in the county for no reason. Who's gonna put together those competitive bid packets? We all approved it and you four lack. So it's for me and Herb to sit there and put together those competitive bid packets. Those things end up being, they're stacks, they're not, it just doesn't say, can you bid on this? It has the insurance clauses, it has the agenda clauses, it has all that stuff in there. I don't know how to write it.
Well, if something like...
TAC's not gonna write that to you.
Something like that, can we make a motion to go ahead and contact with whatever law firm it is to do that, set not to exceed one dollar, five thousand dollars, two hundred dollars, I don't know what, what amount it would be, but set an amount not to exceed so the court knows kind of exactly what we're gonna do.
But you have access to all those bills. Those bills are accessible to you, that's your county attorney's privilege.
But...
And when y'all tell me to do it, if y'all want me to wait on Vittin Navarro, you specifically put that in your motion so we know why it's not being done.
Herb?
Herb, what do you think? I mean, because Herb always took me, I don't ever...
We were waiting for that one, eh?
Because it's county money and I don't want to create any problems, I really prefer every project have a legal cost attached to it. It's easy and when y'all acquire these bids like this and we look at the possibility of authorizing one of y'all or authorizing me to hire a law firm or hire an attorney, I'd like to hire some lawyers locally on some of this stuff, but we've had conflicts in the past, but, but every time a project is approved, I would like to see a cost attached to it, where the order to contend you, at the end of the day, this is how much money was spent for this project. And that's, I don't know if I answered your question or not, but that's what I would prefer. And I don't necessarily have the ability to say, you hire a lawyer or you don't hire a lawyer. I can tell you what, now that was time to take care of it, and then you can work the better part, but I know what to do. On these competitive bid packages, I didn't have a clue as to what they, it would have taken me two or three days to catch up on it. And that was the reason we did Vittin Navarro, because, you know, I didn't, I didn't get in on the content, you did your own content. And I was there when we went through that process. I don't know how much money they charged, I don't know how much money, but we can associate a cost with each one of these jobs, see if we, if we really try, if we can be able to prove it. And that's all I'm asking, is that every mineral lease, to me, is a project. Every, something like that, you push off, you're putting a package together of some sort, to me, that is a project. And every project that we need legal opinion should have legal cost associated with it, and somehow we should need to... Every time we go through one of these processes, you'll find it is less and less need of our lawyers in the future, but until I am satisfied we of the county's not in some kind of peril, I'm gonna ask y'all to give me outside counsel. I just do not want to get interrupted over something that I'm not sure about.
Herb, if we're gonna be using, any, any attorney firm, right? Shouldn't it come to commissioner's court and we vote on it, what attorney firm, give them the retainers fee, I don't know, all that and...
But we don't...
And to keep them like, on the retain, we need them?
The ones that I've associated so far do not require a, a retainer, because we are, we, we are associating ourselves for that particular project. And we don't put ten thousand dollars in a kitty for them to draw, but we just take their bill, we work off a letter, a letter of agreement.
So you're saying that every time there's something else, something to do, we're gonna hire the, we're gonna bring it to court and hire the attorney that we best see fit for that project? It may not be the same one.
I did show Herb Vittin Navarro's letter of agreement. I gave it to him, it was signed, people had signed it, Judge Kendall signed it, everybody signed it. I showed Herb, Herb told me it was about a agreement. On our contract, on our letter of agreement with Vittin Navarro, I gave it to Herb and Herb told me it was about a agreement.
It's, it opened in.
He said, no, it didn't have a...
But important, would solve a lot of these issues is just to associate a cost with, for example, this dumping project. If there is a need for an attorney to draw those packets and for us to go outside of the county attorney's office, then we can sign a letter of agreement with an attorney that can help us draw that particular project up and we can add that cost to that project.
It's just like when we did the jail project, you asked for outside counsel. When all that started, you came up from court and requested that. So if we've got a project for mineral bids, for cleanup bids, whatever, at the time that we approved to do that, also approve in your motion to hire the necessary outside counsel. And it could be X, Y, Z firm, it could be Joe Blow, attorney at law, it could be any number of people, it doesn't have to be a specific type.
Yeah, you, you have the ability to look at the bills that come in, and we may get soaked on whatever wash the while, but you, we don't have to go back to the same one for, for a second, because different specialties require different grades. Sometimes, I've seen attorneys charge four, fifty, five hundred dollars an hour for a project, but it's very specialized. The attorney that did the jail project is, I think, is four fifty, and, but Vittin Navarro's is lower than that because they have a different, we priced in at a lower price and it has not changed since they were signed in fifteen thousand eleven. So, you...
I don't know, two thousand nine. We still have the prices of the...
The, the letter of agreement, the lawyers are pricing based upon that agreement, two thousand nine. And when I sign a contract, when y'all have tried, we've been, by this time, on the jail project, on courthouse parking lot, those projects are gonna be signed by a government attorney specializing in contracts. And when you get specialties, it will go down closer and closer to, there's only three or four in the state, it becomes expensive. But I, I, you know, I do want to, y'all tell me to do, but I, I don't want to be one-size-fits-all. You know, I would, I'd hope that we can get to a point where, when we spend something, you know, that's the reason I ask y'all for Shelby and Pete to sign the bill for the, the jail project. But my whole thing with this, this, this thing on the agenda is for us to try to get a better control of how we're contacting the outside attorney. We, we have no, we have no...
We haven't contacted him as much, I'll try to go through Herb as much as possible. And it's just like Herb told me, it's a lot of these things we try to look at, and if Herb tells me he doesn't know it, then, I mean, why y'all didn't do this bidding process like a...
Let me just make, may I make a suggestion? To solve a lot of the issues, everything that we do at this time, this point forward as far as the need for, let me look at the agenda, and I will come and ask you for a special attachment for an attorney if we need one, and if we don't need one, let's just try it for six months and see how it works. Leave the other place if you want to, but not use it and try this process and see if it will work.
We just need a procedure so we don't have one express called Ching Ching running across.
The part that's gonna scare the daylight out of me and out of you too is the dead ground lawyers that we have to deal with, charged for living the daylight out of them. But that's, when they're the only here in town, there's not much that you can do other than do it or not do it, one of the two, you gotta try. But the public needs to know what we're, we're spending. That's, that's the bottom line.
That's the whole purpose of my motion, is for us to get more transparency, we should have a transparency of what's going on.
I'll try, if y'all want me to, and try to attach a legal cost to every bill that comes out. I can't foresee an emergency situation, if we have an emergency, and we've had them here recently, TAC has been able to help us get through those and they've assigned lawyers to our, but they're assigned lawyers based upon a specific need and not generalized in nature, and they do not give you advice, I'm not trying to deny that, but, but we use TAC quite a bit, because we are paid for part of the services. And that's not a cost that comes across.
The only, the only thing that I have thinking right now, and you'll see one on August agenda, it's a three eighty-one agreement with H and B, that I've been working on H and B with, you've agreed with you guys. We have seven leases that you can go out, I email them to you, do you hear them? I'm sorry, could you y'all? You're not boring me, Herb, you're students, it's any problem.
I have a quick day to sleep, man.
I, I listen to you and you can prepare them and get them ready, because they're gonna be like those dividends, the ones that are built up or whatever. And I always have somebody review them just to make sure that they're correct, but if the court, whether you prepare them, I can email them all to you and you can, you can get them all done. Because the only time that, that we've ever called Vittin Navarro is you've told me, you said, Barbara, I don't know exactly what we should do here, and you call them together, you were so patient.
Let me, let me just tell you guys this, I ain't looking for anything else.
You just got it.
I've got my vote loaded and I don't think anything else, but I'll try my best to make this work if y'all want it, right? Because I think there's an answer to it and it's logical for this thing to be.
So we take a motion on this, or do we just...
If you go on your debt file and you just go back to, you know...
I ain't got a problem with it, my idea is just, I don't want us to be going, have, have the EMS guy calling it, hey, Vittin Navarro, give me a ruling on this and that.
Nobody should do that.
Well, I don't know if they have or haven't. I don't, I don't want that to be the thing, do it.
The whole thing with Vittin Navarro, you know, Ross is on the ethics committee for how long? Is that, I mean, they're, they're one of the most ethical firms around. I mean, APOG uses them, Civilo uses them, all these people use them, every other board I, you know...
I don't think they need difficult at all, but...
Not that you aim as it did Navarro, but...
Well, my thing is, I don't want to make sure every procedure is like, so that...
I promise you, I will consult with Herb before I ever call him.
May we, may we just try?
I will consult with Herb.
This approach first, does it need a motion? I'll be, I'll be, and, and let's just try it for six months.
I will consult with Herb before we ever call him, but if Herb says we need to call him and he doesn't know, I think we, county will want these, want...
Just do it ahead of time if we can.
So how do we work this?
I don't think we have to take actual action, do we? I, I've been satisfied with it, I've been satisfied with Herb. Herb's, he slowed my job down a whole bunch by getting this, checking, bargaining contracts, but he wants it right, he's trying to do a good job.
All right, just for six months, see how it works and come back.
We'll go through Herb, so now actually today...
But let me, let me tell you how this is doing. When we have a project, I'll look at the agenda and say, for example, Ronnie speaks and go out on bid for, for road material. If we need a contract on that, Ronnie's gonna know ahead of time whether we need one or not. I can look at it and tell you whether or not we need somebody, or I can take care of it myself. But this address it at the time that, that Ronnie puts it, because I know that Ronnie's gonna have some big projects that he's gonna bid here in the near future. I think I can handle them, but I'm, you know, Ronnie's tail, I can't do it. But if I can't, I do not know if I'm gonna call it a hole if I, if I don't, the hole there.
If we're gonna try this, Shelby, you put this on the agenda, can I speak with you? If we're gonna, if we're gonna try this, you're gonna serve a control basis for six months or anything, what, what's to say that anybody's not gonna call and not name, naming any one of us five or something like that? Is it here, you put it on the agenda? I've been reading through here and I don't, I don't, because you asked, how would you go ahead and put that in motion? Anyway, I can see, I'm just, I'm just speaking, I'm not making this a motion, yeah, to just be like, make a motion to approve establishing the procedure to consulting outside counsel.
There we go.
There we go.
Any, any, any department head will consult, Barnes County attorney, Barnes requesting commissioner's support for approval prior to contacting counsel.
The whole thing, do you know what, you make a statement, what about...
No, but they, what, what, I mean, if they come and just like speak with you, like for, say for example, I have the problem, I always did that, well, you know, I, you know, I always come to you too, and I came to Mr. Bossman all the time, I always came to y'all first, but y'all just have attorney, county attorneys. And usually y'all look it up, it's most family, both they always look it up and get back with me, I mean, within reasonable time. But like if somebody would just ask you and you don't, then that would be, you could say, hey, hey, you know what, I can't do it, or I don't have that, I can meet someone else and let the commissioner do it.
That's what I would suggest, if, if I manage something, of course I'm asking.
We don't expect you to do everything, I know you're thoughtful, but at least if it's something that you could answer, or at least, you could say, you know what, just call TAC and maybe together we could answer something, and save the county, you know, two, three, four hundred bucks or something.
I don't, you, you don't ever know it, but... I don't, y'all will never know it when I contact TAC. It's not even an issue that you... But TAC is probably one of the primary sources of when I need somebody to talk to. There are lawyers, we got an HR person in TAC that we talked to all the time. They assign lawyers to us when we have a personal issue. All of those sites and they sign them on the front of the project, considerable factor of the project are in front of the issue as opposed to like that. So they're usually there, consult with, deliver or carry through the process and we depend on them.
That's what I'm trying to establish here, if we could just go ahead and do that. And, because I've been, I've been hammered with it in every words too, but...
That's, they don't do, we use all that, they don't do mineralists, they don't do per, select the business, they don't do unit stuff. TAC does not provide that service.
No, we, we weren't talking about that.
Oh, I thought you were like that service, but they don't provide that. And when I went to her and write those, because I'm the coordinator of the county, this should also give an attorney thing, any opinion from the court, run the county attorney or any other attorney supposed to be invited.
Somehow they don't treat it.
I mean, I always talk to her first, so that's the action is that I have to consult with the county attorney to get commissioner's court business done? I'm fine with that. What do you think, Herb?
I have a problem with you doing it, but that's just, just try it for six months. Don't let it go past six months.
So take no action, just consult with you and let's see what the bill looks like?
Let's see what it looks like, six months from now, if y'all had a chance, put it in place.
I'm kind of, I'm kind of lost here because we just asked you. So your opinion is we're just going to do this without a motion? I'm just saying, because he put this in there.
I'll make, I'll take no action.
Okay, it's your, it's your agenda item.
Yeah, I'm coming, taking no action.
Okay, it's your agenda item, I was just trying to help correct it.
Yeah, and we could, we want this in a, change it next meeting.
So you're putting it up?
Can you change it to where it fits?
Yes.
Okay.
The mode that gets...
Thank you. We already did number 30, I'm sorry, we already did number 30, we already did number 31. Review, discussion, the court, we'll get that.
Y'all didn't make a decision on the plan.
There is no decision, there is no action, just review and discussion.
Okay.
How do we do that?
Sorry.
Thirty-two is discussion and possible action regarding awarding of benefits and/or acceptance of proposals. We're going to put it on the next meeting.
We need to put it on the next meeting, but the court needs to decide if you want to hear the brokers or agents give you a sales pitch before we award.
Do you have a spreadsheet? I think that's, no, that's what I'm saying, you're going to have a spreadsheet. Y'all want to hear it?
I think it's provided as a spreadsheet.
So you don't want the...
Because they've all called and asked.
Yeah, I don't think so because I think, that's my opinion, I don't like to take the board.
What, you say I'm just doing...
Sometimes they quote same insurance, so you basically are going to pick a broker that's going to work with you for the next year, so you might want to give yourself that just... I mean, being that with two different, if it ends up with two different, or, if they end up quotes, the one's lower than the other, that's kind of the writer, but if you have exact same quote, then you need to take the agent that's going to run with the open enrollment and fix your problems throughout the year.
So you want to weigh on this?
Well, no. I completely, I let them do presentations. You want presentation?
I would say yes.
How long did we usually do it? Five, 10 minutes? Is it 10 minutes?
Yeah.
Do you remember?
It's not very long.
Five minutes, five minutes.
Number 33 is update discussion on Senate Bill 14, creating a new equipment for voters to show photo ID when voting in person while pending review within the judicial system of US Supreme Court has issued a subpoena in Shelby County versus holders who effectively ended all pending litigation. As a result, holders are now required to present an approved form of photo identification order to vote in all states of elections here.
Okay, and this is just, as it says, just an update so that you guys are aware because this will come up and that the, we are required now in every election to get a photo ID. There are very few exceptions to that, but there are some. There are some, some people who can get a waiver which would be through a disability and they, they have to fill out the proper form for that. But in order for a person to vote, they would have to have one of the following forms of photo ID. And that would be a Texas driver's license issued by DPS, an election identification certificate, which is a license issued by DPS, a personal identification card, which also would be issued by DPS, a concealed handgun license issued by DPS, a United States Attorney ID card containing their photograph, United States citizen's certificate containing their photograph or a United States passport. Those will be the only IDs that we will be allowed to accept when they come in for voting. So I know that this, this is something new and that I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of it so that when election time comes, everybody who wants to vote will be able to vote. And so if, you know, you hear someone mentioning it, it's not a rumor, it's the truth, they're going to have to show ID. And the only option is if, or the only issue is if they come in and they say, oh, I left my driver's license at home, we will be allowed to, we will be able to have them vote with a provisional vote, which would be set aside. And within six days, they would have to come back into our office and cure that. They can't like come back later that day unless they don't vote right then. If they say, no, I don't want to vote right now, I'll leave and go, go get it, that's fine, because then they won't go through the provisional voting process. And then the thing about going through provisional voting is that everybody has the impression because it's the truth, in the past, most provisional votes have never been counted because they're too hard to cure. Now, this, this makes it a lot easier, but the problem is that citizens are not going to catch that. So again, I just want to make sure that you guys are all aware that photo ID is now required for voting in Texas. And I'm taking that on, it's my responsibility to get the word out as much as possible and would like your, y'all's assistance in that. I am gonna, I sent a letter to, to the editor of the paper and I tried to do it a couple of weeks ago, some reason it wasn't working, my, you know, was messing up. But anyway, so I'm going to do that and I'm going to try to go out in each one of the cities to the city council meetings, do this same speech there to make sure they're all aware. I'm going to contact the schools to make sure that they're aware and any other organizations or groups that you guys are aware of, that you're part of, I would appreciate everybody helping to spread the word.
Thank you. Number 34 is discuss approve, disapprove, combining polling places in another 50,000 per election, specifics as follows.
Now, on that one, what I did was go back to the last, because we're just doing constitutional amendments, so I just went back to the last time we did an election with just those things on the ballot and those obviously are typically less voter turnout. And so I don't see a reason to open up all of our polling places and therefore have combined polling places. And again, based on the way we did it the last time.
Do we usually combine the constitutional here?
Yes.
I'd like to vote to approve combining polling places on November 5th, move that into the rest of the section, that's probably...
One second.
Remember that, just for number 15. Already have people going, you know, that a new thing is this, this, this for that election. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion here is four zero. Number 35 is to approve a bond for Danny Denson, EMS administrator.
And we'll go back to 32 for just a second, all the employee benefits packages. When will that be on an agenda because I need to be able to let the presenters know?
As soon as I have the opportunity to talk to Dr. Worley, I still have not talked to him, I went to the EMS meeting last time.
So he'll let me know as soon as...
Uh huh, I will email you. Approved, 35, approve bond for Danny Denson. All ready? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Number 36 is to approve, authorize elected officials to have access to the county website to update their department pages, authorization and those required from the county judge.
I just want to be able to get onto the website, that's listed in the county clerk and attached forms or linked to forms or whatever else we need to do. And when I asked Brittany about it at CIR, she said that we need to have authorization from the county judge to do that.
I agree with what, what Carolyn wanted to do. I've checked other county websites, there's more transparencies as now if we have access, if each department can have access to their web, to that webs, of the county website to their particular page, one, we can post fees, we can post the subdivision orders, we can post what Mr. Kelly wanted to do with the election thing. There's a lot of things we can, the tax rates, the budgets, there's a lot of things we can put out there for people to review and probably streamline a lot of access to a lot of the county information. Yes?
I just wanted to see, and I don't know if it's going to be allowed for, to amend it to not only elected officials, but also appointed officials.
Electors.
I need to set up a page for voter.
Yes.
I think, I know Bi has her, I mean, or Tulley does. Yes. They do their own.
But same thing with the, you know, it could be so much more information put out to the people in the public of the county.
That'd be a good idea.
And state, well, anybody want to access that information?
Make a motion to approve elected officials, appointed officials to have access to the county website, I think there's a lot of papers, all the articles required by the county judge.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Okay, number 37 is discuss approve, disapprove, an interlocal transportation agreement between Karn City Independent, School District Kennedy Independent, School District Wondy Independent, School District Hope Independent, School District Karn County for transportation of Florisville Alternative Centers, School Disciplinary and Alternative Education Students Design in the Juvenile, Justic, Academic Education Program, the Disciplinary Alternative Education Program Transportation Agreement. And the author is Jeanette Nguyen. Jeanette's the superintendent of Karn City and she does this, she got it together for all the school districts. We send our juveniles to the Florisville Academic Program, but we have to have an interlocal agreement and it has to be done in a resolution form and that's all this is. It's there after there's a res and it's followed with that our children can go.
Make a motion to approve, check out number 37, written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries four zero. Number 38 is discuss approve, disapprove, favors to Texas Regional EMS, invoice number six, invoice number seven, for each $2,000, which would be a total of $4,000.
I'm making a motion to approve, favors to Texas Regional.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Number 39 is discuss approve, disapprove, amending the budget for an interesting and emergency circumstances, $2,000 in pay taxes regional and $2,000 in pay taxes regional and that's going to be now $4,000.
I'm making a motion to approve, amending the budget for...
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Number 40 is a tax collection report.
Hold on, I need to... Number four's on the back of that version for whatever you know. Okay. For the month of July, Nuth County, current month's taxes collected $19,592.20. Total taxes collected for the year is $7,886,201.36. Per collection rate, 97.7%. The liquid taxes for the county collected in July, $2,620.96. So here to date, $85,897.7, a collection rate of 38.6%.
Rhonda, any of the...
Well, there we go, it's all in agreement with someone, it's more like with the business personnel, yeah, business personnel, like... Road and Bridge for the month of July, current month, $4,625.94. Here to date, $889,522.96, per collection rate, 97.7%. The liquid taxes for Road and Bridge month of July, $271.30. Here to date, $9,217.26, per collection rate of 43.9%. Rural Fire, month of July, $2,453.79. Here to date, $186,536.12, per collection rate of 97.69%. The liquid taxes for Rural Fire, month of July, $134.51. Here to date, $5,266.53, per liquid collection rate of 48.9%.
Thank you, Rhonda. Bi's going to take a bi to the next meeting?
Yes, there were some discrepancies on my report, so I want to have that next meeting, but I do have copies of the EFIA and our investment policy.
So what you gave me is, what I can't do is, would reside in the...
Thank you.
In the first.
Yes. So you're just going to add that bond to the investment, thank you?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'll grab the bi report on the...
Billy?
That's fine. Do you want any bills?
Yes, first page, first section, the toll spent in this bill cycle for the jail site, which includes disposal of the waste, the specimen of paper, remediation, backfill, et cetera, architectural fees, environmental fees, $34,998.98. Costs associated with courthouse restoration, phase one and phase one A, $31,610.57. If you go down to the bottom of page one, third, from the last entry to Greggo Z. Martinez, $1,054.55. He is the person that was hired as a liaison with USDA on our jail project. You go to page three, you will notice we have a payment, first entry to David and Spirits Architects on the EMS project, that's preliminary architectural plans, $14,644.42. Continue down on that page, I want to bring to y'all's attention, I'm not sure if y'all all are aware of it, Danny has increased the runs and stipend fees for EMS.
Okay, you have a lot, I just got lost page three.
The former rate for a run was $40 and the stipend was $36 per 12-hour shift, effective on August 1st. There is a two-run guarantee at $65 each for $130 per shift and then the shift stipend is $50. If they make more than two runs, now they get paid $40 per run for each additional over two. So that means being guaranteed.
So they're guaranteed two, they make those two...
And then even above that is like $40.
But I mean, like for those two, that's just those two, like guaranteed $40. They already can pay for those, the next one goes up.
Right.
Twenty-two sixty-six and five.
Two are guaranteed at $65 a run. After they make those two, then it's $40.
Okay.
Okay, you go to page...
Do you have any of the budgets?
Well, we have it in the total budget, we don't have it for those lineups, but we've got some extra in other lineups. In that department. You go to page seven, next to the last payment on the bottom, the power plant, our road bridge, that is the rental of the crawler dozer and motor grader for $2,946.42. And then the page 11, Rural Fire Fund, even though this is part of the accounting bill process, this is out of the tax dollars collected for Rural Fire, it is not from the general fund, $369,040 quarter for City of Karn City, City of Rook, City of Kennedy, City of Falls City and then the associated fire departments, plus the volunteer fire department. Toll for this bill cycle, $564,092.18.
On, on page, on page two, that's traditional, at the bottom below Jeffrey... On page, on page two, judicial, at the bottom below Jeffrey Martinez, wherever that is, anybody in there? Is it not the city's responsibility now in some of that issue? Because I thought there was.
That JP orders it?
But, but, there was something in Austin that they were passing that was gonna pass, that regardless, if it happened within a city proper, that the city would be required to cure all the charges.
If that passed, I feel that it was passing, it would have affected it since September first, but is that just for the autopsy? Not for, not for transportation, et cetera, before in all instances?
I think it was all, all, I'm just asking because I'm hungry for sure. I remember seeing something like that.
Well, I know I've read it, but I thought it was a.
It might be, you know, highest.
I make the motion.
One second.
All in favor? Motion carries four zero with Shelby standing for EMS. The next one is report the bond fees and money collected, County Clerk's Department.
The month of July, we collected a total of fifty-three thousand nine hundred seven dollars and thirty.
The next one is the county attorney, we don't have one in the district clerk's county attorney. This craftery set up here, I'll check report altogether.
She gave it to me, no, it was.
No, wait, she set it up here, but whenever it's discussed on papers, I'll ask these. This craftery is with me, she put it up here earlier, she had warrants, and she handed it to me. Did she pick it up?
That was before the meeting?
Yeah, she took her, the warrant, the assignment warrant, she may be wanting some paper in the city.
What did it have for that?
It's a, that little thing that she handled, it's a.
Oh, no, I didn't pick it up, I'll check, you have it, I'll pick it up.
Let's move to JP's, Daisy Crabb.
The first one is Judge Jordan, and there was two hundred sixty-two cases following her court. She collected forty thousand two hundred and point six dollars and ninety cents. Total retained by the county is twenty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Total remitted to the state, thirteen thousand eighty-five dollars and twenty-four cents. Judge Frisack, well, she had a total of one hundred and twenty-four cases following her Her office collected a total of twenty-four thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-one cents. Total retained by the county is fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-three cents. Total remitted to the state is nine thousand forty-one dollars and forty-eight cents. In line, there was a total of one hundred and eighty-one cases filed in my court. My office collected forty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Total retained by the county is thirty thousand nine hundred and two dollars and thirty-three cents. Remitted to the state is eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Do we all be able to break out the job lines by license and wait for such that the, our license and wait deputy is.
Yes, yes.
I'll go back.
Okay.
Thank you, Daisy. That's everybody. Will, Mr. Judge, tell us?
Yes.
Okay, Denise, you got yours?
Yes.
I can take out where you want. Okay. Thanks. I just balanced with my criminal side with the probation. From the twenty-fifth last month, the remainder of the month I was down, we did not have go-karting and the manual, right now receipts for the civil part and criminal part, and now we're just processing them. And, again, I have the civil report, because I'm the criminal, I just balanced with the probation, and I will get that.
Is it okay? Can I just have your backup?
Right now, I don't have it, again, with what the staff are.
Did it just optical earlier, or did it?
I don't know. Internet, we don't have internet, we have.
Okay, and then here is, this craftery's, she had restitution.
I told her, thank you.
Restitution for July, she had three thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. Here today, she has twenty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. And court costs for July, she had eight sixty-two nineteen. Here today, five thousand twelve fifty. Total monies collected are twenty-eight thousand seven hundred four eighty-two, and compared to her today, she had twenty-eight sixty-seven eighty-two last year. And Eva's is. The amount fee that should be collected, she has thirty dollars. And I always tell you, please remember, these are juveniles, this is not a, this one for the year three twenty-on. That's more of a service department than it is a fee collection department. Tracy, would you come with us? Yeah, special projects?
With all this, um, we have applications we had, thirteen per total of one thousand four hundred and seventy-five. For septic applications, we had seventeen per total of seven thousand.
On that flat line thing, is everything working?
Yes.
All the applications, the plastic fee, you're not getting any?
There are, at the time, and they put in their application, they're paying their.
Good. And you're not having any problems with this?
Good.
Number forty-four, Rita Report from Road Bridge.
This is something Herb mentioned earlier, it hurts still for, I've shared this information with Herb, and I'll tell you where it came from and what we're asking. We're gonna ask the court to do, I spoke with a commissioner from Duwitt County, and he explained to me in detail how they bid their material, and what you have is copies of the materials that they bid. I think it's an excellent procedure and process. They bid the material that they're gonna purchase for the entire year, the way they lock the price in for a year, and they take, they take two bids, and this is something Herb and I'll have to work on. They have a primary bid and a secondary bid, and the purpose for that, if we're doing some of our larger projects, and we bid our primary bids from, say, Colorado materials and the Bronx, and we want to do some smaller work here, we want to use local materials, those will be available on the secondary bid. Also, trucking, Colorado materials, they submit a bid that would be a penny a ton per mile higher than local bids could deliver the material far. Probably, I would prefer to use the local contractors and use our local people, and I think we probably would get a better bid from them. The issue becomes, if I need fifty loads of material, and our primary bid bidder says it will be two weeks before we can get it, then I can go to the secondary bid and use that person. So, that'd give us some flexibility and the ability to get the work done and get it done legally through a bidding process. One other item I'd really like to mention to you, to get you to think about, is the bids that we already prepared and generated to remove the material out on three twenty-sixth. Lawton and I have discussed this, and there's an item in our budget that right now, the way the budget's structured, we can't use the funds. There's eighty thousand dollars in the budget to pay an engineer, and here it over, and you don't have an engineer, and that money cannot be lying out and transferred from salaries to supplies and services. I think legally, the court, we could put that on the agenda, and that money could be used to offset whatever portion of the cost of removing that material's gonna be. That way, we wouldn't have to use the entire cost from my operating account. Is that correct, basically?
Something else Ronnie and I talked about too, has the bond of the previous administrator been canceled? And have we, I know we haven't received a refund of unused balance, and is there gonna be any claims made against that bond to uncover these recovery costs?
That's a question that you have to ask.
These, these are just for your information, it don't require any action that the court should be aware of, some long-term plans, some goals that we're gonna try to start implementing and putting in place.
Ronnie, just cause I could, we're not, we're not putting out signs, break for squirrels, look out for ducks, fifteen miles an hour for cats in floodway, we don't have any solar-powered signs that are monitoring people's speed, nothing like that, do we?
Nothing, nothing, nothing has been.
Because that's what's happening within the county. You've got people putting out signs, slow down fifteen miles an hour for cats on county roads. And I was being sarcastic about the break for squirrels and stuff like that, but people are out there trying to protect their, I guess, their deals, and they're putting them on our county roads, and I don't see why we should, why that needs to be out on the county road. Only thing to be on the county road is a stop sign, a curb sign, approved speed limit sign.
Who's putting these, who's putting these signs up?
I don't know.
Yeah, I was sharing with my partners.
But the general, the general public does not face anything on the county road, because that's a liability issue on the county.
I just want to make sure that, so everybody knows, it's not the county going out there taking taxpayer dollars and putting these stupid signs out.
I appreciate people trying to take care of their stuff like that, but not on our county road.
Well, you know, we have a slope for children playing, you know, bus stop signs, stuff like that, but this.
Those are approved.
Yeah, those are approved.
Where are these signs?
I haven't seen them, he just brought them out.
I can show you, those.
County Road one eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight.
Not by me.
What does it say?
Slow down dogs and cats.
People do like this, that's in the.
But it says the fifteen mile an hour sign, as well as there's a solar-powered thing breaking speed, I don't know, that I can see, I don't know.
Was it the, no, the county property, it's on the property.
It's on the county road, Barbara. I've got pictures.
That could be based on our roads without, of course, you.
Y'all let me know where those are.
One eighty.
Okay, and the next one is, if you want us.
The discrepancies that I've noticed in the county attorney's report, I defer to the end of the meeting till she gets some.
Shelby?
I've been agreeing county policies, I've been posting up the list, I'm trying to compile the deal and make some recommendations to the committee pretty soon, thinking of changing and enhancing.
It's not here, are you putting them? It's not here, James?
Jesse and Junior are doing fine on that.
Tracy?
For the month of July, the permit department, the dog commission, taking in forty-two thousand one hundred and thirty dollars.
Is that everything? The forty-five is Citizens of the Urban Fund. Forty-six is which arm?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Nine, motion carries four zero.
For the board.
Mike, it's like we're the board.